Well, it does not appear that the number of participants is increasing, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. The call to order meeting number eighteen oh five, the Planning and Zoning Commission at six thirty one P M. We have a quorum, all regular members are present. Mike, other than the new receipt of application, are there any added agenda items?
There should be two applications to receive. Do you have both?
Geez, sixty nine Depot Street, I got that one. What's the other one?
The other one is the seven A Pasco. Seven A Pasco Commons, the one we spoke about last week, he did, or last meeting, he did apply so that be received for a public hearing.
What was that, what was that? Pascal Commons?
That seven A Pasco Drive Special Use Permit. That's Rini Dupuis.
Yeah, I got that, I got that.
And I can, it's P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty one, that's the application number.
After, during the business portion, we'd like to have a conversation regarding how we see that the applications are handled, you know. At what point is there a cutoff regarding when we, when we accept them? Because obviously I missed one, and I thought I was prepared for meeting and caught flat footing. Nonetheless. Legal notice, there was, there was none, is that correct? This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments from the audience for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? Feel free to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak regarding, or have a comment regarding something that's not already on tonight's agenda. I'll take that as a no. Next up, approval of minutes, June eighth, twenty twenty one. Members of the commission, are there any comments, corrections, any changes? To the minutes?
I read them and I'm satisfied with them.
I'm fully satisfied also.
Okay, now hearing any changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting eighteen oh four, held June eighth, twenty twenty one.
There's a motion for approval, is there a second? A call for vote, all those in favor say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
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 I see five hands, so motion approved. Receipt of applications. There was one on our printed agenda, and there were two other ones, I'll get to the printed agenda first. P Z dash twenty twenty one dash twenty, S J K Properties LLC, Zone Change Application. For zone change from R three to R one. Map one hundred, block seventy seven, Infobrevity, I'm not going to list all the lots, but there was twenty seven lots. Under map one ten, block seventy seven, for brevity again, there was twenty three individual lots. And the last one is map ninety, block seventy seven, and there were four lots listed. There were also two new receipts of application. He's the twenty twenty one. For seven A Pasco Drive for a special use permit. In my kindly, who was the applicant on that one again?
His name is Rini Dupuis.
Thank you.
D N E D U P U I S.
And the second one is P Z dash twenty twenty one dash twenty three, sixty nine Depot Street. And that's for construction of an additional. Construction of an addition adjacent to an existing house. And I forget who the application is for that, who was the applicant for that one? Someone have that handy?
Yep, I can pull it up. So that one is.
I think it's a joint ownership.
Applicant, if I'm reading it correctly, it's Tim Jacob.
Okay.
Uh, no, I say, isn't that Peter Sneeta, isn't that the former chairman of the Board of Education?
Sorry, yeah, so the, the applicant, it looks like Tim Jacob and the owner is Brian. Or it's hard to read, John. And then I think that's the last name that you just mentioned there.
Pick a Sneeta?
Yeah, pick a dash Sneeta.
Pick a Sneeta, yeah.
And just for clarity, none of these receipt of applications will be discussed at tonight's meeting, these will all be discussed at future meetings. Next up on the Performance Bonds Actions Permit Extensions Road Acceptance. A West River Farms Update. Anything new on that one, Mike?
Yep, so I just left this on here because I wanted to confirm that we received renewals. For all the bonds, so all, there were four. Four or six letters of credit for various amounts that were due to expire and, and all of them were renewed and received, so that's all squared away.
Okay. And anyone, members of the commission have any questions regarding item A, West River Farms Update? Okay, I'll move on to Calamar. Oh, so, Mike?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so the action that we took last meeting, do we have to do any action to rescind it, or it will just? Kind of die on its own?
Yeah, I, if I remember correctly, the discussion last week happened basically, or the, the action was if they weren't renewed. So because everything came in, we're good to go and there, there will be no other action by our office.
Okay. Okay, item B, Calamar.
So this came up at the last meeting just as a status, because we know we've kind of all seen the project come to a halt. So I just wanted to confirm the bond status, we're holding fifty seven thousand dollars in cash bonds for landscaping and erosion and sedimentation control. So based on what it looks like, again, those, those were cash, it's not a letter of credit. So, so those are being retained by the town, it's obviously not a subdivision type of project where there's roads and, and a lot of public infrastructure. Which is a good thing, but we do have, I think it's fifty seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, I think is the amount. Four hundred and eighty dollars in, in two separate bonds.
Thank you. Any comments, excuse me, any comments from commission members regarding Calamar?
Has anybody talked to the developer at all?
Um, I have not, I know that the building official has had, at least last time I spoke about it with him, fairly open communication with the project manager. That was during the winter time. I can try to get a, kind of a status update, or I can check in with some folks to see if we, if we have anything official. And if I have anything to report, I'll bring it back to you.
Mike, you had your hand up for a minute?
Yeah, um, how long would we wait until we actually took some action? You know, it's six months, a year, how long do we have to wait before?
I think that if there was an issue related to one of the bonds or a violation, we, we could, you know, start the process now if there was a, a major, let's say, erosion and sedimentation control issue. We would notify them of the violation and ask them to take corrective action, and if not, you know, we could go forward with using the bond funds, we, so. Yeah, if there was a violation, there's no amount of time that we would have to wait.
I'm just thinking about the partially constructed sidewalk there.
Yeah, um, I don't, I, I guess I can look to see in the specifics, like I said, it was, it came in as landscaping and erosion and sedimentation, so I don't know if that would have included. The sidewalk, or if any of you recall, requiring that to be part of your bonding, but. I can certainly follow up on that, for sure.
Well, the purpose of the sidewalks is for the benefit of the residents residing in that facility. Since there are no residents living there, there should be no, no one walking in that area.
But the, the part that makes it a little difficult is that they also went on other property owners. Frontage, so I would think that the, the other two property owners would have some recourse to say, you know, complete it or do something with it.
Good point.
I'll follow up on that.
Along the car repair place and along, and also adjacent to Sophia's, Sophia's Plaza's frontage.
Correct.
If there's no other questions on the performance bonds, I'll move on on the agenda. Continued public hearings. P Z twenty twenty one dash nineteen, text amendment applications to East Windsor zoning regulations, section eight oh two point one. And eight oh two point four, multi-family development district, M F D D. The applicant is S J K Properties LLC. And before we get started, I just want to clarify something, I picked up my Journal Inquirer this evening, or late afternoon. And there's an article of, of, about this, and it talks about a lot of things that we're not going to be talking about here tonight, it's. I'm, I'm not going to say the, the article is inaccurate, but we're only talking about a text amendment. The, the article makes reference to a zone change that is not on the table for any discussion tonight, because there, because there is no application, you just received an application, will be discussed at a future meeting possibly. So the article as written is not accurate regarding what we're talking about tonight, I just want to clarify that. With that, Mike D'Amato, do you want to, um, you want to summarize what you put together in a staff memo? Because the last time we, we left, we had a very long deliberation, we heard a lot of great public comments, we heard from the applicant, we heard from commission members. And we had some questions regarding. When the zoning density regulations change, and some of those answers may help in better inform some of the commission members regarding how they may, how they may vote. When it gets to that point.
Sure, so, uh, in my. Sort of notes and my takeaway from the last meeting, there was a couple of sort of major topics or issues, questions that came up. So I tried to outline them in a succinct way in my memo. The first one was this suggestion that it, that could be spot zoning, or a concern that what we were doing could be misconstrued as spot zoning. And there's some really, really well-established case law that, that basically I outlined in my memo. Which, which kind of gets into intent in that you folks would have to clearly know that what you were doing was not supported in any way by. By the zoning regulations, by the P O C D, and that it would be a detriment to, to the community now. I'm going to, I'm going to, that doesn't mean that, that, and that can sound subjective, but what we're talking about here is rezoning a portion of, of residential property for. Industrial so that someone can, can establish an auto repair facility. You know, we're talking about something that's very, very clearly totally out of sync with what's going on, you know, this, this type of residential discussion that we're having. You know, there may be some, some disagreement about the appropriateness of the change, as we heard during the public hearing. And, and that is not the same thing as something that would qualify as spot zoning, so, so I just don't want you to have concerns about that. And, and I did follow up or sort of end it with, if you want to remove the agricultural zone component from the application. Merrick has indicated he was fine with that, if you would be more comfortable with removing that. Again, I think you're covered, you don't have to worry about spot zoning. And the other reason for that is that, as I said before, the total universe of properties this applies to will change. Because properties are combined and subdivided all the time. And so if, if three properties now, or thirty properties now fall into this reg, it won't be the same in five years. Which is why we're not real worried about the spot zoning component. The other thing that we heard was what I'm calling applicability. And the fact that it could be wide-ranging, and as I kind of said, because these properties are changing, you know, you could have two ten-acre pieces that are near each other or touch, and they. You dissolve one property line, and now you have a piece of property that suddenly falls into the M F D D. Our office approves lot line reconfigurations all the time, they don't come before this board, and we do multiple per month. So parcel changes happen often, and so the parcel map is, is fluid. The last thing that came up was density and, and kind of why there was this potential change, so we went back through the regulations. And I, and I again tried to summarize succinctly. From what it looks like, the zoning regulations were changed in the second half of two thousand and six. And a number of things were changed, one of which was the Balkan area requirements. And it included this density factor regulation, which is what brought the total yield. Which is where, what, where you saw that change from one point zero to zero point nine. It was the, the density factor which still falls in our regs now. Basically applies to now what we call the M F D D, that was when the M F D D hit the books, two thousand and six. And so there was a split in the densities for M F D D, P R D, applications, and then all your other residential applications. So that was when all of that happened. The project that the applicant was referring to during the public hearing was approved prior to that. So, so the previous iteration of the zoning regulations, which didn't create those two categories, were what applied to him. We didn't find anything that got into the intent, as far as why a number of changes were made. But I suspect it really boils down to the fact that the M F D D zone was first established at that timeframe.
Thank you. So, members of the commission, does anyone have any questions for, for staff? Before we let Merrick weigh in, if he has any questions or comments. Okay, so Merrick, do, this is your opportunity, the floor is yours, you have questions for, for staff, or you'd like to add to your, to, to the presentation?
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merrick Kement, representing S J K Properties. First off, when are we going back to being in person? I've already had a couple meetings in person, and it is quite a, quite a difference, it was a, it was actually strange to go back to that, so. So maybe someday we'll be back in person.
Yeah, our next meeting is in person.
Ah, terrific. All right, anyways, uh, so I want to, I did submit a statement on the record, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but I would like to read it for the record and for the residents. Who have not had a chance to review that. So during the last public hearing, the comments from the residents of Eastwood Estates were completely inappropriate, and I am offended by their position and accusations. The application before you is for a text amendment, which is a proposed change to the zoning regulations townwide. All comments and discussions should not be based on site-specific properties, and I believe Mr. Chairman already mentioned that prior to the start of this public hearing. But not in my backyard mentality is an emotional reaction, and should not be the basis of any conclusion. As, as you know, the focus of the text amendment should be on its merits and the effect townwide. At this time, I would like to in, discuss and share the related density versus construction costs to give you an insight where we are and why we are proposing this text amendment. A cost, I'm not going to give you a specific example, but I believe you know what I'm talking about. A cost estimate was performed for a single-family residential subdivision in our three zone, consisting of forty eight building lots. This estimate was for five point one million dollars to construct, which included the infrastructure and roadway construction. And the sewer connection over a mile away from the site. Based on these figures, the developer would have to sell each building lot for approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars just to break even. This is not taken into account property taxes, carrying costs, permitting, inflation, or even posting of the bond. I don't believe people realize how expensive it is to construct a, a development these days. Unfortunately, building lots in East Windsor are roughly half that value at this time, so using fifty five thousand dollars as an average cost for a building lot in our town. The break-even yield is ninety two building lots, again, this is only to break even. It is obvious there is a need to increase density for this example provided, to ignore this would be unfair. Our purpose for this tax amendment is not agreed, but serious, but merely simple economics. Within the last fifteen years, when was the last time an application for a traditional subdivision was submitted to this commission? That included a roadway construction with sewer and storm drainage infrastructure. I do not believe that, that there have been many, if any at all. Construction costs prohibit development based on current density requirements, this is why you see more frontage lot and rear lot applications. We are proposing a housing opportunity that will slightly increase the density from one house to one and a half houses per acre. That's from forty eight to roughly sixty six houses, and all while not impacting the abutting neighborhood. This text amendment isn't anything different than what has already been approved in town. We have Millbrook off Church Street, which is directly abutting a single-family residential subdivision. We have Hillside Farms and Meadow Farm, both off Depot Street, and abutting rural subdivisions. We have the Mansions at Canyon Ridge, located in a rural designated area. Scana Glen off Ellington Road, also located in a rural designated area. And Norton Glen off Norton Road, located in, again, a rural designated area. As an alternative, we have also submitted an application for a zone change. To change the zone to the R one residential zoning district, which will provide a density increase at two houses per acre. This direction could yield more than eighty eight houses. We are not opposed to building a town road, but this will directly impact a neighboring subdivision, something we wanted to prevent from the beginning. A private development is also preferred over a town road because of eliminating the town's obligations for maintenance responsibilities. Of the road and infrastructure. A new town road could also increase townwide property taxes as opposed to a private development. Without increasing the density to support the sewer infrastructure burden cost for our site, the development of our property is being prevented. We do not see any other options. We have tried to talk, we have tried to work with this commission, and we have tried to appease the residents by continuing to lower the density to reach a happy median. I have been transparent from the beginning and have been extremely fair trying to come up with a workable solution. At the end of the day, we are looking to go from forty eight to sixty six houses. From a townwide standpoint, this will only affect two properties located in the R three zone. As mentioned at the last public hearing, and as Mike D'Amato just mentioned, if the commission prefers, we can further restrict the text language and eliminate the inclusion of the agricultural zones. You should also have in front of you an updated. A map which shows what areas are affected, and it's only that one section of town which is our property and the property to the north. As we all should understand, the P O C D is only a guidance and advisory document. This tax amendment promotes housing diversity and increased density in the Broadbrook area as provided by the P O C D. The P O C D offers guidance for increased density. And it also suggests that the Resinal Growth Guide, which you have in front of you, and the Resinal Density Plan may need to be modified for specific development opportunities within our town. We have a specific, unique development in front of you, this opportunity, and will not affect neighboring communities versus what a town road would be. We have explored alternate methods of developing our property other than this text amendment or the. Excuse me, recently submitted zone change to the R one. We see no other viable solution. Unless the commission has an alternative that is economically feasible. We're all ears, so please provide feedback, so for your consideration. And again, thank you for continuing to work with us and try to come up with a reasonable, a reasonable solution for our, for our development efforts. Thank you.
Does any member of the commission have any questions for Merrick or staff? So why don't we, I'll ask everybody, Mike? Want to start out with you, any questions?
Um, not, not of Merrick. I, I mean, if we want to start this off. In, in, Mike, in your memo. You did talk about our obligation to hear anything, we have no obligation unless it's, there's been a material change, and you, and you list a couple of items which. Could be considered as a material change. I'm just kind of questioning as a, as a commission, do we need to first establish that we're in agreement that there has been a material change and that we are going to entertain looking at this any further?
If, if I could just make one comment regarding that before you make a further discussion. I did confirm with our attorney, and we did provide a material change with the text language, that is the situation. That is, that is how it is perceived, there is no other situation in, that you could even think of that would create something different, so. Basically, the material change is within the language and what we are proposing for this commission, and that is our position.
So Mike, can you get that? Go ahead. I was just saying, did that, or before or after you wrote this memo, or did you still see that differently?
Um, so I. I think that. What Merrick said is, is correct, you know, there's not a, a lot of support either way, I, I think that in this case, it's a little bit different because it's a text amendment application, but. If you try to apply that same sort of language and logic to, let's say, a development application, if they came in and asked for something, a hundred lots, and. You know, if they came back in and asked for the same thing, exactly the same, there really wouldn't be a change. But if they came back in and had eighty lots or a hundred and twenty lots, that's where you start seeing that significant or material change, so. I would agree. That there is enough here to support a finding of there being a material change, I don't want to put words in your mouth because it's ultimately up to you. But I, but I'm not uncomfortable with the commission making that finding.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification on, on the first part of your memo there, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with the material change as presented.
Frank, do you have any other comments regarding any other evidence or documents, things we've heard tonight?
No, but I do have a, just a general comment. I've been on the commission a very long time, and I've never spent so much time talking about. Anything and everything except what we're supposed to be talking about, and that's the text amendment. We talked for hours and hours and hours about proposal and lots and streets and number, that's, that's all to come, our main focus here is a text amendment. And I, I think, myself included, I've lost track of that at times, and it's been a long tedious job to just come up with a decision.
Thank you. Ian, any comments or questions regarding anything you've heard already tonight?
Um, no comments on what I heard tonight, but, um, I do truly appreciate Mike's memo. I think it was very helpful, and I totally support his concept. That this apply only in the R three zone. My reason for feeling that way is, I really think East Windsor has an agricultural history. And to apply this and to. Have multi-family development. And added, potential added density in. Agricultural zones, I would rather not see, so I think Mike's solution is very good.
Thank you. Jim? Jim?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. So we're going to continue the public hearing. Um, one thing I don't want to do is I, I certainly want to give everyone an opportunity to, to speak. But I don't want to rehash everything that we already spoke about last time. That's already been memorialized for the record. All the parish members have heard it and heard it live. So please don't repeat comments. Or, or statements that have been already made last meeting. If you are unable to attend last meet, uh, the last meeting. And you would like to make comments of the first time, obviously speak up. But please, please, so we, we, we don't want to go backwards. This is only, we want to go forward regarding new information, new questions. So I'll leave it at that. So who would like to speak first? Just please raise your hand so I can, and I please identify yourself for the record. I do not see anybody's hand raised. Yes, sir, George. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, George, seventeenth Street Drive. A couple of points regarding the reduction in density from one point zero to zero point nine. The only possible reason for that to occur is a conscious decision to reduce the density. Uh, I read Mr. Kim's letter and I take issue with a couple of, of his points. Uh, last meeting. I brought up the fact that there's a development going up. Right on the corner of Eastwood and Depot Street. And Mr. Kim pointed out that it's apples and oranges because one is sewer and the other is septic. And he also mentioned that the pumping station for the sewer system in his development will be about a million dollars. Now, if you take that million dollars. And divided by forty lots for the sake of easy math. That's twenty five thousand per lot. Septic and wells are not free. The average cost for a septic system is ten to fifteen thousand. The average cost to drill a well. Is five to ten thousand. So at the high end, it's a wash. At the low end, it's ten thousand or so. Cheaper for a well at septic. And. As far as adding value to a home, if you're trying to make a sale. City water and. Sewers hookup is a big plus. So even if the difference is ten thousand dollars. I think that could easily be made up in. The price of the house as, and it as a favorable desirable feature compared to septic and well.
George, if I may ask you a leading question, so I, I, I've written down notes of what you talked about last time and I hear your comments now. Are you opposed to the, the concept of the entire text amendment? Or you're just opposed to the density associated with the proposed text amendments?
The density.
The density.
Which is really the only purpose of the text amendment is as far as I can see is to change the density.
Okay, thank you. Another, another, excuse me, somebody else. I do not see anybody raising their hand or shutting off their microphone. Am I missing somebody? Please speak up. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. So Merrick, do you have any? Go ahead, George.
Uh, yeah, one other question, actually, multiple questions. On page two of Mr. Kim's letter. He lists one, two, three, four, five examples of similar. Text amendments, Millbrook, Hillside, Mansions, Scanna Glen and Norton Glen. Uh, can the commission comment on each of these or at least direct me to where am I? Uh, find the specifics of the tax amendments approved for these five projects.
Personally, I have not done a fact checking exercise of what, what was in that memo. That that letter that was made to the commission. I'll have to take it as face value that it's the, the information is accurate. So George, I, I, I can't answer that question whether or not. Um, the validity of, of, of that information. I, I really can't.
Is that something I can access in the town records?
Absolutely. I think you can, you can, you can go down to public hall, excuse me, town hall and you can look up the file. For each one of those approved. Um, dwelling you, the developments and go to the file. Am I, am I misstating that, Mike the model? Can he go and?
Yeah, and any, any application that's approved by the commission is something that is maintained permanently. Our office has, most of what we have is in town hall. Some of it is, is housed offsite, so we may have to bring it to town hall, but all that is public information.
Okay, I'll, I'll stop by tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, so Merrick, do you have any closing final remarks?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the last thing I want to do is get into a debate here tonight and as the furthest thing that I want to do tonight. Um, but just to confirm what I, what I said last meeting regarding that development. Uh, that George was talking about, it is apples and oranges. Um, he just talked about the sewer, but what about the roadway, the blacktop importing the topsoil, the storm drainage detention areas? There's a lot of fees associated with development and isolating it just, just to the pump station is a little out there and. Um, just want to clarify that. And other than that, I don't have anything else at this time.
I see the Braggs have their hand raised. If you're speaking, you're on mute. If you're speaking, you're on mute.
Yes, hi, I'm just seventeen Eastwood Drive, Broadbrook. Um, what is the actual number? It seems like every night we get on here, Merrick gives us a different number for housing. What are we at now? Eighty eight sixty six? So. I, I'm getting lost here.
Well, that's not really what we're talking about, the number. We're just talking about text amendment for density. So I, you know, I don't have my calculator handy and what the new number is. I don't think that the density numbers have changed.
Okay. So it's the M F D D that I, I think that everybody's having an issue with because the M F D D is going to be changing. The demographics of the amount of houses in one particular area. Um. On top of that, Mike, the model was talking about the zone changes in two thousand and six. What about the twenty sixteen zone change? Why isn't that mentioned? I mean, how much money was spent for the P D Z?
P O C D.
P O C D, P O C D, and we're, we're leaning back to two thousand and six. Why don't we look at the two thousand and sixteen? I mean, it. That, yeah, it's, we're all over the place. I, I guess that's it. I mean. I think everybody's just a little bit disgusted with the, we, we bought this property as an R three. And now we're looking at an M F D D in our backyard.
Our R three zone.
Right? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, um. Any commission members have any additional questions? Because I like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a question.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay, okay, I have a question. In Mr. Kim's recent letter. There is a line there where it says that the need to increase density exists in town. And to ignore it would be unfair. Uh, as far as the changes to M F D D and this unfairness. My question is, um, who would it be unfair to, to developers or to the residents of the town? If this increase in density is ignored in a rural community? That's it.
Thank you. Tom, did you have your hand raised?
I did.
Yes, sir.
The question, so.
Okay, just identify yourself for the record.
Tom Bogdajewski, twenty six Margaret Drive. Um, so is it currently approved for forty eight lots or thirty nine? It says, uh.
It's zero. The answer is zero. It's not approved for anything.
Okay, so.
There is no approvals on that piece of property at this time.
Okay, so I'm wondering where this information must have come from.
What do you mean?
Well, I'm, I'm reading the J I, which you said disregard in the beginning, but uh, it, it does say that S J. Thirty nine lots in the R three zone are, would be approved, but. Forty eight, the forty eight lot thing expired in two thousand and six. So right now, nothing.
Correct. All, all approvals have expired. There is no approvals for building lots in that area.
Okay.
Let's, let's concentrate on the text amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, yeah, yes, Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Okay, Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Uh, the, the, the question on the P O C D and the. Uh, dates. The two thousand and six P O C D. There was a lot of things that happened. In two thousand and sixteen, some things did not change. So the P O C D that we're working with, everybody should be working with, is the two thousand and sixteen. And some of the content. Hasn't changed since two thousand and six, but that is the two thousand and sixteen P O C D. That's just a clarification I want to get out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mike, sir. Mike the model, is that, is that a true statement by Paul, Mr. Anderson?
Um, so, you know, I think we're all trying to keep all the various things that happened straight. So. The two thousand and six change that I outlined in my memo relates to a zoning regulation change where there was a tweak. In the way in which the commission. Dealt with density because the M F D D regulation was created. So you create there are two, the density factor component. Came on scene for the first time in two thousand and six. That was a text amendment. Application because you created the M F D D zone. So there was no two thousand and six zone change. It was a text. Change. It was a commission initiated amendment to the regulation. So. Um, the two thousand and sixteen P O C D is a ten year planning document. A zone change is, is something clearly separate from the text change. So I just want to make sure those three separate. Three separate entities of kind of commission priorities.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Merrick, were you in the process of saying something?
I was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just wanted to say what I said earlier in my, in my, um. Uh, letter is that the P O C D, um, it states in there that it may need to be modified for certain. Um, specific development opportunities. So it's right there in the P O C D. It also states that it is looking for an increased density in the Broadbrook area, which, which this property, this, it would affect us. So it is, you know, actively in that P O C D. So I just want to restate that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, George.
Uh, I suggest that. That the public hearing be kept open until the commission looks at these five. Uh, items that were called out in Mr. Kim's letter. As precedents for this type of text amendment to see if they are in fact similar or not. He's claiming this is a precedent for what he's asking for. And I'm questioning that and I think the, the commission ought to satisfy itself.
Speaking from experience, George, every text amendment that the commission has ever commit, ever considered is never based on precedent. Everyone is self, stands on its own, based on its own merits, not what we've done in the past. We treat all applicants fairly. We give them the same. We read from the same requirements and regulations that we, that, that's uniform, but every application, whether it's a zone change, text amendment. Is independent based on the facts presented, not. So the truth is, if all that information, what he's presented is not true. Well.
Uh. That's a credibility issue, if you ask me.
Thank you, George. I'll query the commission when it gets to that time. Thank you.
I get.
Uh, Ian, I see your hand is raised. Is it Anna? Ian, I'm not, I'm, I can't tell.
Yes. Um, Anna Mangefico, thirty five Sullivan Farm Road. I just want to say that, um, you know, my family is trying to develop the last phase of Eastwood Estates. Without impacting what's already been built there. And um, that's why they're trying to develop their property as a private development or a planned residential development. Versus constructing a town road through Sullivan Farm Road. And so that's why they need the text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have one last call for, for public comments. This would be the time to speak if you have some additional questions or comments. Okay, so my, my questions. Marcy, are you turning on to speak? Or you're just?
Sort of. I'm not really a public speaker, but I just want to say I'm Marcy Stiles, seven Sullivan Farm Road. My issue with this project has never been about the Kements or. Um, this development in Sullivan Farm Road. It's really that this is a very rural area. And I'm concerned about an increase in density, increase in traffic in the whole area, whether I lived here or not. I'd rather have thirty houses down the road from me through my neighborhood than a double that development. I just think I hear coyotes every night. There's a lot of wildlife around here. It's very rural. So I just wanted to say that I do oppose having more properties and changing the text again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to query the commission members. Um. Does the commission members at large feel that we have enough information that we should be considering closing the public hearing tonight?
I, I do.
I, I, I definitely have more than enough information. We keep trying to bang over the things that we've been going over and over and over. Uh, I'm ready to close the public hearing.
Okay, I, I, I also feel that I personally have enough information to close the public hearing. So, so that, 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 that's a, that's a majority. So what I'll do is some. With that, um, will someone offer a, a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in quick?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, uh, throw this in before the hearing potentially closes only so the applicant can, can confirm. Um, I had a conversation here. He called me and also spoke with a town engineer. Um, he had suggested that, um, if the commission was more comfortable or, or wanted to include. An additional modification to the reg. Um, that's as proposed to require that a development falling in this category would, would be obligated to. Be done via a private road only. Um, that he would have no problem with adding that. Um, the town engineer obviously has no problem with roads that are no longer an obligation of the town. Um, and I, you know, we had that discussion. Um, a quick breeze through our subdivision regulations doesn't seem to provide any real relief from the standards. Um, but again, this would be maintained, um, you know, not by the town. So I just wanted to put that out there so Merrick could confirm that he was comfortable with it. So when you get to the deliberations point, it's on the table.
Uh, yeah, you know, we're, we're comfortable with that, um, all along. We understand that the town on, on. A maintenance issue would prefer to have a private development versus a town road. Um, so yes, we're in agreement with that statement.
So with that, will someone kindly offer a motion to close the public hearing for the proposed text amendment?
I'll move to close the public hearing on application P Z twenty one. Dash nineteen. It's a text amendment application to the. dash nineteen. It's a text amendment application to the East Windsor zoning regulation, section eight oh two point one and eight oh two point four, multi-family development district. The applicant is S J K Properties LLC.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. A call for vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see five hands raised. The public hearing is closed. So my my question to the commission is, um, do we want to move? Take a vote on this tonight, or we want to um, dwell on what we heard tonight? And consider taking up uh, voting other at their a future meeting? We're not obligated to vote tonight, so I'm just putting that out there. What is the fancy of the majority of the of the commission? Personally, I'm willing to go either way. But um, Mike, how about you? Do you have enough information where you want to think about it some more?
Well, one other thing, I would like to see our paperwork cleared cleaned up since we've made proposals of two modifications, one removing the agricultural zone and one adding in another line for um, pro- private road development only. Um, I'd I'd much rather see this one be nice and clean versus uh, wordsmithing uh, on the fly.
I would also suggest if we are going to clean it up, we make a finding with relate relationship to um material change. So that that's clean and done in the findings.
Okay. Jim, do you have an opinion either way?
I I agree. We could clean it off, make sure it's everything's perfect on this one.
Okay. Well, I heard enough. That's a majority. So um, we are not going to vote on this tonight. So we're going to be uh, continuing. So Mike, will you add this to our agenda for July thirteenth?
Yep, I will. And I will incorporate those modifications.
And that's in person.
We yeah, it's we have something later on the agenda, but yes, after July one, it can be. Should that be the commission's choice?
Okay. So for 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 those in the audience who who may be confused, all we did tonight was close the public hearing. We haven't decided anything. At a next meeting, which is July thirteenth, the commission will, uh, it's not obligated to. We still have some more tough calendar days to review it. We'll be voting on this uh, zone, excuse me, text amendment application. So stay tuned.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight.
Thank you. Moving right along to our business meeting. We have a Z E O report. Mike, was that on there as a um, a standing item or um, or we're going to be talking about some elements of it?
Uh, no, I it was not on the meeting last with last uh, meeting because Ruth was on vacation, so we didn't have enough to date. So we we put it on for this one so that you guys would would be kept up to date with that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Z E O report? Okay.
I have no questions. I'm just very appreciative that we get it. And I think format is wonderful.
Couldn't agree more, person.
Yeah, I I appreciate getting it, but it was nice to be able to talk to her on some of the issues. But I appreciate getting it.
So item B discusses a virtual meeting update, which we just alluded to a few minutes ago. Mike, we did the commission have some options here?
Yeah, so um, the first selectman sent out that email, which was discussed the last meeting about resuming um, in-person meetings. And almost immediately after his sending of that email, um, you know, the the budget implementer bill uh, in Hartford, um, the language dropped, which included provisions for virtual meetings. So um, the implementer bill is, I don't know, six hundred pages or three hundred pages, hundreds of pages. Um, eight hundred pages, I think. And um, basically, the what it boils down to is there are kind of three important pieces to take away. You can have an in-person meeting. You can have a virtual meeting. You can have a hybrid meeting. Um, the caveat is if you choose to have an in-person meeting and a member of the public or a member of the commission requests to attend the meeting virtually, more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, you need to make that accommodation and vice versa. Um, so if you want to have a virtual meeting and someone wants to participate in person, um, they need to be able to um, do that and unless it's been requested, you know, twelve hours before. If a quorum of the commission decides they want to do something a certain way, then that's basically the format that the meeting will be advertised. Um, we can't have a virtual meeting where everybody but one commissioner is in town hall and one commissioner is virtual and call it a virtual meeting. So that's really the way that it's it's going to work. Whether they be attending virtual or whether it be in person, they have to have all the same um, abilities as everybody else. They need to be able to participate in real time and interact with the commission um, regardless of the format. And that is going to be in effect for about a year. Um, and there are some folks that are going to study how this works on a state sort of statewide, and they'll then make that um, determination, I think, in the next session for what we'll do permanently. So moving forward, um, all of, as you saw in the email from Jason, all of the towns' meeting rooms are equipped with the tech to be able to run the hybrid meeting. And so I think what we will do particularly so we don't run into issues with how we advertise legal notice locations, um, is that we will move to in-person meetings unless the commission doesn't want to, and we will advertise and try to host it as a hybrid with a hybrid component. And just kind of move in that direction.
Uh, Mike, a couple of quick questions. I probably read this but forgotten. Uh, we all have to have double shots, double or two-shot vaccination shots, and do we have to wear masks?
So the way that the email read is uh, if I'm remembering it correctly, as well as if you are vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask.
Do we have if somebody is unvaccinated on the commission? And I don't know that that's a fact. Um, hopefully, everybody's vaccinated. But if somebody's unvaccinated, is there a way for them to maintain six-foot distance?
I don't know that specifically. I think the guidance was.
Table is what we would have to do. But if everybody vaccinated it, to me, it doesn't matter.
Right. I I don't, you know, I think that the the email that was sent said that you could verify vaccination status. I don't know, you know, you could ask.
We need to do that. I think we.
Yeah.
People's, I'll say verbal if they say.
I think what they were getting at, um, you know, people, I know people, many people choose to wear a mask even though they are vaccinated. So you know, there could be a number of reasons. I I'm not sure how that would work, and I don't know. We may have enough seats. I'm trying to think. We've got one, two, three, four, five. You know, we may be able to spread out enough at that table so that we're fairly far apart, um, provided we can all get on on the uh, camera.
I think we only have to do that if somebody's unvaccinated. We need to give them extra space. If they have a medical reason or reason they didn't want to be vaccinated.
Yeah, I'll 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 follow up with that prior to our next meeting and figure out um, if we have to deal with any of those logistics before. I think it's the fourteenth of July or whenever that meeting is.
Well, we can volunteer. I'm vaccinated.
I'm. I am too.
I'm double vaccinated, probably triple.
Joe, what is of sure?
Well, there's your answer.
So.
Then we don't.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is a team, you know, there's behind-the-scenes work. So we also have two other team members. We rely on town staff, Mike Damato, as well as Peg. So when the commission makes the decision to to have um, the hybrid where we all appear in person, does that also include our support staff? Does that also include, does Peg have to be in person? Or no? No, it's only commission members. Now, I.
The bill is is wide open, so anybody can attend in any format. Um, so uh, the there was guidance way on in the with the executive orders that basically said if if you're going to resume meetings and we're going to get into this virtual setting, if a commissioner asks to attend virtually and you go to a hybrid, you have to accommodate them. This now, this now goes to everybody. So if if Peg or someone would feel more comfortable, we can absolutely accommodate that.
Good. And 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 that's great. We've been as flexible as possible, and we should.
That's the goal.
So um, one concern I have is, you know, I I I feel comfortable enough to um, appearing in town hall. Um, so that's something probably I'll opt for. But um, I probably, I don't know if I have the proper training to run. Let's say, Mike, that you're you you're not there. I may not have the proper training to reach, I mean, to to run the uh, the teleconference part of it. You know what I'm saying? Because, you know, my focus is on, I mean, as 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 the chair is more of a process. Not is to make sure that the efficient flow of the meeting and get our business done as efficiently and quickly as possible. And you know, and I don't want to be have all these help, you know, hiccups regarding, you know, how does the camera work and how do you do this? How do you do that? How do you hit the record button? So if you're going to be there, um, that's my problem.
I'm I'm, yes, I'm not planning on leaving you high and dry. Um, but but redundancy is not a bad thing. So, you know, it's at some point you want me to show you, everything's pretty pretty set and ready to go so that we have a backup. Probably not a bad idea.
You know, maybe uh, at our June thirteenth meeting, if we do all decide that in person is appropriate, maybe we can have a uh, maybe as part of our business meeting, maybe a brief walkthrough of how how the equipment works. We all have a basic understanding of what button to hit. Let's say we all hit our heads on the wall or something like that, and we all go unconscious. At least one person will be able to to run the equipment.
Sure.
Job training, O J T.
Mike Kowalski is pretty tech savvy.
The other advantage of maintaining the Zoom and in-person, if somebody is away, um, since we are short bodies and have no alternates, it enables somebody to come in from, let's say, vacation. If they have computer capabilities wherever they are.
Very good. So so is is it agreed that um, if you want to be in person on July thirteenth, show up at town hall? Is that 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 that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, is that good enough for you? You 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 want, okay. And I think there's a lot enough people shaking their head that uh, many people will be in person. Okay. And it's up to what you and Peg want to do. That's really entirely up to you.
Well, we need Mike or we don't know how to turn on the computer.
I'll be there.
Or we need somebody from town hall staff who knows how to turn it on if Mike can't be there.
Right, because we will have, we will be having a public hearing that we, you know, the the text amendment application that we close the public hearing. That's not a public information. I mean, that's not in a public, it's a meeting in the public, but no public comment. But we will have a brand-new uh, one for that's the Pasco Commons special use permit will be up for discussion. Okay. So next on the agenda, if there's nothing more on that one, is a P O C D update, open space.
So um, and when kind of getting back to the Z E O report, you know, Ruth has been working a bit on the P O C D implementation. The town has a P O C D implementation committee, so they're trying to go through everything, figure out what's been done, what needs to be done, prioritize. Um, there is a, you know, fair amount of discussion and work that needs to be done related to open space. And so um, one of the things that we'd like to do is is get a conversation going with the applicable commissions and and bodies surrounding open space. Um, so that would include um, Conservation Ag, you guys, um, and I think one other one. Um, to basically have a discussion about what the direction is and and kind of form form that conversation around the guidance that's within the P O C D. One of the things that's really complicated is getting a bunch of four separate boards together. And so what I thought would probably be easiest is if we simply put out to those other boards that we pick an or a regularly scheduled P Z C meeting to have that discussion because you guys already have a location booked, you already have the date, you're already available, so coordinating it is far easier. Um, so I, it's a bit of a, hopefully you'll be in agreement, but no, no action that we really need from you other than your willingness to host these other commissions to have this discussion.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
And and the fact that we can, we have the capability to do it hybrid, they don't all necessarily have to be in the same room with us.
Yep, that's for sure. Just trying to cut down on the number of meetings if we can combine them at at some point.
And for scheduling, I mean, if you go back to our bylaws, the first meeting of the month is supposed to be one to dealing with applications. Second meeting of the month is supposed to dealing with um, uh, discussions regarding zoning regs and not update P O C D. It's it's more of a working and I would think that this discussion would would fall into that category. So what I'm asking is if you try to get it the second meeting of the month? Yeah, and and if it's not the end of July, which that that would be July twenty-seventh, we only have one meeting in August, if I'm not mistaken. I think our bylaws, we only have one meeting in the summer. Or or maybe it's the July, the July meeting, we only have one meeting in the month. I I I don't have that one exactly.
I think it's August, Joe.
Okay. It's not a deal breaker. I I just put it out there.
Yeah, no, we can certainly target that if that's what you're interested in. The only thing that I, you know, we may want to look at is how busy your agenda is so that you guys don't.
Understood. Yeah, yeah. And that's priority, you know, is is moving through the applications, you know, it's uh, that's our role.
Yeah, our our calendar for this year did include two uh, July and two August meetings.
It did.
Yeah.
So I think we, if I remember correctly, we had a little bit of a discussion about it, and the intent was that you would cancel that meeting. But by having it on the calendar, it gets an application that we receive, received, so these folks don't have to wait the full month. Um, so it it you guys don't have to meet, but the received date will still be that meeting, so we don't have to schedule them out four weeks. We can just keep them on that same track. If I remember correctly, when we kind of talked about it, so I had sort of had in my mind that we would, we would move forward with that meeting being canceled.
Okay, and and that's one of the things I mentioned at the onset of the meeting. I'd like to have a brief conversation regarding receiving applications. But but there is another business, uh, another item on our business meeting to discuss before that. And that's the zoning amendments discussion?
Yeah, so um, this was on here mostly because we're watching, I was watching a lot of the legislation. Um, and I just wanted to put it on there as a placeholder, not knowing how everything was going to shake out. There's a couple of things that we will likely um, need to tweak in our regulations based on the the follow-up from all of the legislative changes. I think I've mentioned some of them, one of which is as-of-right accessory apartments. So we will probably have to have a discussion about not requiring a special permit for an accessory apart apartment or accessory dwelling unit. Um, there are some requirements for the the total number of parking spaces you can require a home or an accessory apartment to have. The other thing that that kind of popped up on the radar like a week ago, that that's caught a lot of folks off guard um, is a bill which basically allows the commission to extend the total duration of an active approval up to nineteen years in some circumstances. We're still kind of dissecting it and looking to see how it would apply because there's two bills that kind of work together. But in in these, in these circumstances, um, for for subdivision, and I can't remember if it applies to site plan, um, if the application was approved and active as of a specific date, and I think it's in two thousand and eleven, um, they can ask for up to nineteen years of total extensions. Um, so there's no regulation change that needs to happen there. It's just something that we may deal with if there's a project that kind of falls into that timeframe. And then, you know, there are some other things that, um, you know, the commission may have to discuss related to some of the housing discussions and, um, other changes, but, but those are probably the biggies.
Um, something caught my a- attention of, of reading the, uh, Harfakurt. You know, um, as we've probably all heard that the, um, Governor Lamont signed the cannabis, uh, recreational marijuana bill into law today. And I noticed the town of Prospect, uh, was kind of out in the forefront and they have, uh, they have established zoning regulations prohibiting the sale and manufacture of, of, of recreational man, uh, uh, marijuana products in their community. And, um, I have my own personal opinion about that and I'll, I'll keep that private. But, but Mike, what I am asking, is it possible for, for, for you to reach out to the, the town of Prospect to see what type of, uh, regulation they crafted? Can, can you get a copy of that?
Yeah, I can try. I suspect, um, what they probably did was, was enact a moratorium, but I can, I can follow up. Um, I'm actually through with the planning and, planning and zoning officials too groups were working on getting some, um, trainings together for July and August related to a lot of this stuff and trying to find a cannabis expert. So hopefully I'll have a much better handle on that, that I can update you guys on. But I will.
And the other question I had, it, it's, it's just a question. It's more about practice regarding receipt of applications. And it's not the first time it happened. It happened tonight where we received something the day of our meeting. And if we're having regular meetings every two weeks, I, I, is, is there a, is it appropriate to draw a line on the sand and say, hey, we're not going to accept an application, receive an application after a certain date? And kind of where I'm going with this is, why would the town want to accept an application that's incomplete? Let's say that you're supposed to have A through Z and, and you only have A, A and B in it. And if you accept an application, ultimately may the only course of action is deny the application because it's incomplete. But if you had, if town staff had an opportunity to go through it to make sure, to check all the boxes, have the minimum requirements, like today, you know, I, I'd be surprised. I mean, I, 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 I tip my hat to Amanda. If she went, had an opportunity to check all the boxes to make sure it was complete before we accepted it. When we accept it, we also accept the fee too. There's also a fee associated with it. I don't think we want to take someone's money if in fact we told them it was incomplete. So.
Yeah.
What's, um, how does all that work?
So it's, it's actually kind of timely because there, there was a recent case that came down. I think it was, uh, Farmington or Avon. It wasn't Avon. Far, uh, Farmington River Valley, I think. Basically, um, statute determines and governs receipt. So if, if an applicant drops, drops an application off to our office Monday at four thirty, statute says that the application is received Tuesday at the meeting. So if the meeting is six twenty-two, as long as that application comes in on or before six twenty-two, statute says the date of receipt is six twenty-two, which simply means that's when the clock starts ticking, right? So if you have sixty-five days to schedule the public hearing, that date starts ticking away as of six twenty-two. So the reason why we provide these to you when we get them is so that we can get them received and scheduled and not lose that time on the front end. Um, so we don't have to send them to you. I, I've, in other towns, they prefer to just, that, that's the received date and we schedule the legal notice and it shows up on the agenda for public hearing, but kind of like for you guys to have the chance to see them. And getting to your second point, the, the, the recent sort of court case basically said, staff doesn't really have the authority to decide if an application for the commission is complete or not. Which means even if they're asking to, to develop a subdivision and they don't provide a site plan, the commission has to decide that it's incomplete. If I make that decision before it comes to you, I am basically stealing your ability to review the application. So the recommendation is if you get something that resembles an application and, and you get an application fee, you, you, you put it on the commission's agenda. If they don't provide anything, the commission should open the hearing, deny it and call, and call it a day. And if not, request the materi-, request the, the application materials, but, um, it's creating a bit of, of uproar in the land use community because it's a waste of the commission's time to have these applications go before you. But the judge was pretty clear, staff can't make that call.
Okay. Maybe just me that has this hang up of our receiving everything at the, some things at the twelfth hour. It just annoys the heck out of me.
Yeah, I'm totally, we can, we can change the way in which it happens. If, if you would rather not get everything, I can simply say, when you ask me if there's items to be added, hey, you know, guys, we have these two applications that just came in. This is for this and this one's for that. Um, and, and not send you the materials. If you think that would be more appropriate, we can certainly adjust that. It's up to you.
How does the rest of the miss, commission members feel? Business as usual? Just keep on proceeding as we've been going?
Mike, uh, can't you act as a advisor to a, a applicant saying, well, you know, usually here's what happens. You have to have a site plan when you're going before the commission. Uh, I, I, I've worked under previous planners that did that and it seemed to expedite, you know? But I, I legally, I don't know if your hands are tied or what.
Yeah, it, we, yeah, we have, and actually following, um, some of the issues that kind of came up when I first started, we've modified our subdivision application so that it specifically has language which says, when you make application, we want you to provide the following, one of which is co- confirmation, you've talked to W P C A. We want, and, and I have a note on there which says the following, if the following items have not been provided, the application cannot be considered complete. So we want, we have that expectation of them and usually applications when they come in have everything. But people don't necessarily know when the meetings are. So, so our, our guidance is usually get it into us as soon as possible. So we can schedule a butters and legal notice. But if you don't like that you're hearing these things last minute, we can certainly hold them back. But the received date won't change. So it just, you guys just lose two weeks worth of time.
Well, if you say, we, we lose two weeks of time, what do you mean by that? We, we're not deliberating on anyway.
Right. But if, but so like with the seven eight Pasco statute says you have sixty-five days to open the hearing. The date of receipt, because the application came in yesterday is today. So if we didn't send it to you via email just before the meeting, when you see it, which will be in two weeks and you sk-, if you were to receive it at that point in time and schedule the hearing, the only thing that's happened is you've gone from having sixty-five days to hear it to whatever it is, fifty-one or whatever the balance is. So a lot of times people want it as soon as possible. So you guys have that flexibility. You can use the whole timeframe. But, um, you know, we can certainly hold it back if, if you prefer.
I think I'm going to let it go. I'm the only commission member that, that seems to have an issue.
No, no, I, I, I say hold it back because in, in my world, you know, you do a building permit or electrical permit, whatever, it's thirty days. They can take up to thirty days, review it. And believe me, they take up sometimes they take right to the twenty ninth, thirtieth day and then the process starts. So I think holding it back two weeks, I don't like getting things jammed down my throat last minute either. So, so if they have to, applicants have to wait two weeks, that's, you know, I don't think every town processes it right away and get it and process it. I think they make you wait. So I, I don't mind waiting an extra two weeks.
Mike?
Well, the, the things that are kind of presented us to, uh, on the, on, as you said, the twelfth hour, we usually do not take any action on them. We don't review them at all. It's just read into the record. So I, I think there's a good compromise. If, if Mike has stuff that came in, he can give us the information on it. But do we actually even have to read it into the record? Can we just, like he said, just say, yep, there were two other applicants received, uh, today or yesterday. And they will be added to your next, uh, your next agenda. And, you know, we can get some of the backup documentation to start looking through it and reviewing it ahead of time. But it's not read into the official record until, uh, our next meeting.
I, 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 I like, uh, Joe and, 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 uh, Jim's idea, uh, the less I have in front of me is, is the better, especially as you get older.
Joe, I think we should do what you're most comfortable with because you have the burden of figuring out how to manage the meeting and we should make it work for you. We're, you know, giving feedback and ask us for it.
So he, yeah, he, here's my thing, you know, I'm the old boy scout motto, be prepared. I pride myself and be, taking time and reading through everything. And if I didn't check my, my, my email late in the afternoon today, I would have missed the, one of the applications I caught in, you know? I'm all over my work email, but my private email, yes, I do look at it a couple of times a day, but I'm, I don't look at it every minute of the day. So it's one of those things I, you know, and if I, if I didn't do it today for whatever reason, where my, my phone, my phone dropped in a bucket of water, I can't get to those things. So here again, I'm not as prepared, but if it was on a printed agenda, there was no excuse why I can't be prepared.
So you do a great job being prepared and we should be making it easy for you.
I agree a hundred percent. Very task oriented, Joe.
So Mike, Mike the model with that, can you, the ones that come in like, can you just, 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 you obviously legally you have to accept and can you just let us know what those are? Yeah. And, and Amanda can continue putting it in SharePoint. That's fine. If she has an opportunity to upload that, but you know, sometimes it's the last minute.
Yeah. So I mean, unless something comes in that's, you know, there's some, something that's sort of out, out of left field, we really won't add any applications to the agenda. If an application comes in on a Monday and the agenda, once the agenda goes out, even though the statutory date of receipt will have been tonight, the first time you'll find out about it will be at the subsequent meeting two weeks later. Um, that's, that's pretty much the way that we can work it. So I, my notes basically say, once we finalize the agenda, there will be no applications added day of the meeting.
Okay.
And Mike, we're not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to beat you up. You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
No.
Doing it would be under new business, you could were just report them out verbally. That.
Yeah, well.
Why I, I received these things and you'll get it in the next package. But it shouldn't be a burden on Joe to be organized and find him at the last second.
Yeah, no, makes, makes no difference to me. I, I, once we finalize the agenda, we won't touch it and you know, they're going to have to understand that if they don't get it to us by, you know, we, we've been telling folks Thursday at noon, we will do the agenda Thursday afternoon and we fire drill it out Thursday to get everything done and email. So I'm happy to, to slow things down. Um, and, and actually this is a good segue. Something that I did want to mention before we wrap up, I don't know if it's public knowledge or not, but this is, uh, Friday will be Amanda's last day with us. She's going to another town, um, to a different department and, and, you know, I have been blessed, uh, in my time in East Windsor to have, to have total, uh, competent rock stars in that office, um, moving at a hundred miles an hour, which is, which is the way I like to go. Amanda has done a tremendous job, um, at, at supporting, along with Ruth and Peg. I mean, everybody's great, but I want to mention, you know, sort of on the record that she's done a, a lot of great work in supporting the commission and, and, um, it's going to be big shoes to fill. Um, so I just wanted to let everybody know. So this is a great time to do this because we'll be working with a new person and we're going to have to set up a new process.
Is there a coverage plan for the office?
We are, yeah, we're working on it.
Or go and somewhat, I'll say, unsettled by constant turnover. And maybe that's the way in the world today, not the world I grew up in, where you stayed with the job kind of for life. But it's feeling like we're having a hard time keeping people.
Yeah. Um, yeah. So we, so Amanda is like a taskmaster and has a process and a chart and a checklist for everything she does. She's prepared a transition memo. She has a binder. So she's totally prepared. So, so plan A is for me to convince her not to leave and plan B will be to figure out a way for, you know, all of us to kind of pitch in and, and cover. And I think that, you know, the job is posted, but, um, you know, and that's not to say we'll do as good of a job as she did, but we, we want to maintain any level of consistency that we have had in, in the process and what you're used to, in what the residents are used to. That's, that's the most important thing and, and we'll make sure that happens.
The old adage is, is you're only as good i- i- as, as someone in charge of an offices, you're only as good as, uh, the people that work for you, you know, the support staff and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's going to be a long time before, before, uh, you know, overcome. Now Amanda's leaving us in a huge loss for, for the town.
Yeah, I, I, when I first started in East Windsor, I, I remarked, I've remarked to a number of people between the commissions and the staff that are in the office. I don't know how it happened, but the, the stars align in East Windsor sort of has all these great things. And I'm like, I don't know how you did it because I'm in a bunch of other towns and I can tell you it's not this way everywhere, but, but it's been great, you know, between, between you folks and Amanda and Ruth and Peg. It's, it's been real easy for me and, uh, it's going to be a big loss for us, but we will figure it out.
Are the selectmen, um, concerned with the turnover or is it just normal?
Um, as, as someone who, who's, you know, uh, for, I post the job postings for Casio, turnover is normal. You know, we have to, uh, a lot of times you have to move to be able to gain either more money or more responsibility. You know, you don't necessarily work in that same job. And so you have to kind of jump. Um, the, the position Amanda's taking in, in another town is, 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 is more technical. So I think in many ways it's a definitely a step up for her. Um, and so, you know, it's hard to negotiate with that. So I think, I don't know if they're concerned. I, I don't, I know if they've had this discussion, but unfortunately it's normal.
And, and we are concerned. If you'll remember that when our term started, that office had its challenges. And it was one of our number one priorities is to get it straightened out. And I think a lot of headway has been made. Um, and so when you take a step back, it, it is, it hurts, but it is what it is. And we just keep plugging away, try to get more good people in.
I guess kind of, and maybe having been a state employee where you can't negotiate salary or benefits, it's, it is what it is. And it may pay less than lots of other things. But people who came long ago stayed because they wanted the retirement. Today it's not that way. And I don't know, maybe municipal government is the same way that the salary plus retirement doesn't make it a, I'll say, permanent lifetime job.
I think it depends on everybody's, you know, what, what you, what your lifestyle is and what you're looking for. It really depends. It's a case by case thing, I think.
Depends upon goals you set for yourself, you know? I mean, it might be East Windsor's has been a stepping stone for a lot of people and they've gone onward and upward, but that's the way it goes. We're lucky we've had them.
You're right. We've had really good people.
And we've had some really, you know, people that were, it's okay that they moved on.
Yeah, no, but I, I'm just saying in Amanda and in Mike, we are incredibly lucky.
And Ruth too. So we're hoping to keep the ball rolling.
And Peg as well.
Yep.
Peg is stalwart. Never, she's never leaving us.
The cornerstone.
Yes.
Amen.
So are there anything else to be good to be ordered for tonight? If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Be one of our, uh, shorter meetings in the last little bit.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Mike? Any discussion? I didn't think so. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. See you in about three weeks, July thirteenth.
Thanks, Mike Damato. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Take care, everyone.